Okay, welcome. And this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. This is December 17th, 2019. And I believe this may be the last meeting of the year. So we're at 209 Surf Street. So if you have nothing better to do, come on down and have fun with us here. We have a full contingent here, so we have a quorum, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please observe a moment of silence? Okay, thank you very much. Next we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand face the flag and ready, begin.
(inaudible)
This is the time we'll open up for public comment. This is for items that are on the consent calendar or items that will not be, that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that'd like to speak to one of those two items, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no presentations. We have, our consent calendar has one item, item A1. Do we have any questions or comments on, anybody wish to pull an item? An item, pull the item.
I'd just like to ask, I noticed we have the Vistra project on there now. Are we likely to see that here at some point? Will that come before the commission?
Yes, it is. I mean, they submitted it a little over a month ago. We sent them their incomplete letter last week, and so we're having conversations ongoing and working on the environmental, getting an environmental consultant onboard to move that forward, so yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm going to accept that consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Okay, call the order, call the question here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to public hearings, we have item number B1. It's an appeal of CDP 19-035 and location 450 Oahu Street. Do we have any ex parte communications on this?
I don't remember if Chris and I discussed this job specifically, because we had a long conversation the other day, but Chris and I had a long conversation the other day, so.
Okay, great. That should cover it. Anybody else? All right, staff report?
Yes, hello. Okay, good evening Commissioners and residents of Morro Bay. Quick note to those who have already reviewed the staff report. In the zoning table, I identified that the front setback for the R1 S1 zone is required to be 15 feet. It's actually only required to be 10 feet in the R1 S1 zone, so just quick clarification there if that's confusing. With that said, this first agenda item before you tonight is an appeal of administrative coastal development permit, CDP 19-035, for the conversion of an attached garage into an accessory dwelling unit or ADU at 450 Oahu. The appellant is Chris Barber, a neighbor of the applicant Matt Ernstorf. I want to take a moment to clarify the appeal process. For those who may not be familiar, the city's certified local coastal plan gives the director authority to process certain types of coastal development permits administratively. This project, which is the conversion of an attached garage into an ADU, is included in those types of permits that are processed administratively. CDP 19-035 was deemed complete and noticing began on October 1st, 2019. The public had opportunities to make comments and speak with staff about the project. Chris Barber and neighbors submitted a letter to the city on October 11th, 2019, outlining neighborhood concerns with the project. The city responded to the comment letter, determined that the project met all applicable rules and regulations, and issued the coastal development permit on October 15th, 2019. The project was then appealed on October 25th, 2019. All correspondence is available as attachments to the staff report. At this stage in the process, the Planning Commission can either uphold or deny the appeal, or man the project back to staff for further review, or continue the project to a date certain and provide direction to the applicant and staff. Moving on, this project is specifically for conversion of a 275 square foot attached garage into a 213 square foot accessory dwelling unit and a separate laundry area with exterior access for the primary residence at 450 Oahu Street. The lot size is 2,400 square feet and the primary residence is 852 square feet. This project is located in an R1 S1 zone surrounded by R1 S1 on all sides, sitting south of Orca Street, north of Nevis Street, east of Tide Avenue, and west of Panorama This is a view of the single-family residence in current site as seen from the street and the bird's eye view. This table outlines the development standards for the R1 S1 zone. The existing home is non-conforming with regards to lot coverage, however, the addition of the ADU is occurring entirely within the building footprint, and the addition of habitable square footage is under 25% of the primary residence's square footage, which is why this permit was able to be processed administratively from the beginning. This is an image of the existing site plan juxtaposed with the proposed. As you can see, the new ADU will exist entirely within the existing garage footprint. The laundry room will only be accessible from the outside and will be for use by the primary residence. This is a visual rendering of the project provided by the architect. You can see that the ADU entrance will have a minimal impact on the home's front facade as seen from the street. In the coming slides, I will be discussing the appeal issues that the appellant raised and the city's responses to those issues. So the first appeal issue. We do not feel that the conversion of a 200 square foot ADU would be beneficial to the neighborhood. In staff's response, the project was reviewed and found to be consistent with all local and state rules and regulations. Secondary units are in allowed use in residential zones. Additionally, I will state that state law requires the city to ministerially approve the ADU application per government code 65952.2E, so the application actually cannot be denied. Appeal issue two, we would like the Planning Commission to review the details of this permit and consider limitations and restrictions on development of this property in light of community standards. Staff's response, the appeal process allows for additional review of projects that may be inconsistent with local, state, or federal law. This project, however, has been found to be consistent with all applicable rules, regulations, and ordinances, and therefore cannot be restricted or denied. Appeal issue number three, SB 1069 has allowances for a case-by-case examination of these standards. Staff's response, each ADU project is reviewed on a case-by-case basis from the beginning of the administrative process. In this case, converting an existing garage space into a 213 square foot ADU meets all requirements, including but not limited to consistency with the general plan, local coastal plan, and zoning ordinance, consistency with California state law with regards to parking, size, fire safety requirements, and building code requirements. Appeal issue number four, the final one, we think that the conversion to an additional third bedroom would be acceptable, but a separate rental unit would contribute to overcrowding and possibly have safety problems. Uh-oh, we have some technical problems. Pause for one second. One slide back. There we go. Staff's response, pursuant to Morro Bay Municipal Code Section 17.40.040 and California state law at SB 1069, both the ADU and the primary residence meet the parking requirements for the site. Additionally, the number of renters allowed in the proposed ADU is actually governed by California Health and Safety Code 17922. So in conclusion, staff has found that the proposed project meets all the requirements set forward in California state law, the city's general plan, local coastal plan, residential design guidelines, and zoning ordinance. Staff has concluded that the grounds for an appeal of the project's approval are inadequate to repeal the director's approval and the director's approval of administrative coastal development permit. So with that said, this item was noticed as required in the San Luis Obispo Tribune newspaper on the 6th of December, and the property owners and occupants of record within 500 feet were duly noticed and invited to attend tonight's meeting. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the director's decision to conditionally approve administrative coastal development permit, CDP 19-035, subject to the findings and conditions of approval outlined in Resolution 2919. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Jesse?
Is it accurate to say that the work on the ADU, not just the fence, did that begin prior to the issuance of permits?
To my knowledge, yes. And then that was remedied by coming in to get the administrative coastal development permit, so they're going through the correct process at this point.
But they did start without permits?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Michael?
So Willow, if there was a third bedroom, does that trigger an additional parking requirement on the site?
Technically, no, because there is an existing carport in the front there, and the residence is under 1,000 square feet, and this zoning allows for one car garage or carport if the residence is under 1,000 square feet. So it would be meeting the parking requirement either way.
So if they at some point would add an upper floor, like some of the residents have around them, they have a higher parking requirement?
Yes, because the square footage would likely go above that 1,000 square feet.
Right up until the point we adopt our draft zoning code, at which point they won't be required to have garages anyway, but they could have two spaces still on site.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
I visited the property, and clearly, you know, parking on the block is pretty tight. And I was wondering, you know, should there be some sort of a safety hazard arise, what's the mechanism for, what's the mechanism for evaluating whether there is a safety hazard given congestion on the street? I'm just curious as to what would...
I mean, I'm not sure what you're referring to. I mean, the street exists, the street width is, you know, is what it is. We have the houses on the street, there are access like any other street in town. Whether it's narrow, whether it's constrained related to parking, isn't really an issue related to ADU. ADU isn't required to provide parking because it's within a half mile of a transit stop, so.
Well, I was recalling in one of the letters something about if the street might be so congested that a fire truck couldn't get down it. And I'm not suggesting that that will in fact be the case, but I was just wondering, what's the mechanism whereby somebody makes a claim and we prove it or disprove it? I'm just curious.
I mean, the Fire Department reviewed this project and had no issue with it.
Okay.
So we route all planning applications through the Fire Department, and they provide conditions commensurate with their area of interest or what concerns they may have. They haven't expressed any concern to me related to any of the streets that we have as far as their ability to get up and down them and access folks if there's some sort of, you know, emergency or so forth. Well, and if I can comment on that also, just kind of spitballing here, so I mean, if there was a problem where the fire truck couldn't get in, then they would have to post no parking signs so that the Fire Department could have access. So I mean, that's not really what we're doing here today, right?
Okay, Willow, the parking that's allocated in that carport is nine foot, 10 and 1/2 inches. Are we required to have a 10-foot wide by 20-foot wide footprint, or is it different for carports?
It is 10 by 20 to my knowledge. It is nine and 10, 10 and 1/2 inches, and our ability to round does let that slide, and the car does fit in it. But yes, if it were a new carport, it would be required to be 10 by 20.
So as, it would be grandfathered in as a, you know, as a legal parking space the way it is?
More to the point, our ordinance would accept it as being compliant, is the point being, is we have a rounding ability in our ordinance that lets us do that, and so it would be compliant, considered compliant based on that.
Okay. And then would you, just for our edification and probably the public's, review the constraints that we're going to be under, under the new state laws, what, 1089 and 2022 or something like that?
Sure, are there any specific ones? It's quite a lot of information.
Mostly dealing with parking?
Yeah, so ADUs are not required to add any additional onsite parking. You can also convert your existing garage into an accessory dwelling unit without having to replace those parking spaces covered and enclosed. Typically, they want to see those parking spaces at least replaced in some configuration on the lot. In this case, they're being replaced in that carport situation.
Really, the current law just simply allows the discretion of the community to require the parking spaces to be replaced. The city could make the decision, not that we're doing that here, but that you don't have to replace them. It just says we have the ability to do that at this point, the way the statute reads.
Yeah, this project is actually exceeding its parking requirement by having the covered space. It would only be required to be just an open and uncovered space, so.
Jesse?
Couple more question on that topic. I think I know the answer to the question, but just for the public's knowledge. So with the new requirements for solar and the new upcoming code adoption, would you, could you speak on whether an ADU would require solar on an application date after January 1st?
I don't believe that it would.
It's my understanding as well, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's our take on it as well. I mean, I guess certainly we could get some clarification coming down from the state that that's not the case, but as my current understanding is that's correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, so at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. We'll, typically we have the appellate come forward first, so would you please come forward, state your name?
My name is Chris Barber. I live at 449 Oahu, directly across the street from that building. These are all of my neighbors. We live in the adjacent houses, one house up next door to this house on the other side. So there's five of us here, there's three more that couldn't attend due to children issues and work commitments. You know, when you talk about this, it's like saying to put an ADU in here, when you take away the 213 square feet, you take away the cabinets, you take away the kitchenette, you take away everything that's not usable as actual floor space, you're down to 125 square feet. And it just seems to kind of go against the flow of our neighborhood or the uses of our neighborhood, which is traditionally single-family residences. So I actually went through and answered your questions that you sent back to me, your responses, my counter responses are kind of structured along that line. So if I may, so the ADU standards that were developed earlier that the city actually approved before the 1069, is that what it is? Okay, so those did not allow for an owner to separately rent an ADU. This is the situation that we have. It, let's see, separately, so it was made provisions to accommodate the parking, because in our neighborhood, as you can see, if you went back to the other picture, to answer your question about the Fire Department, we live there. I've had to be taken out of my house in an ambulance by the Fire Department, and it's extremely tight. In other words, they had to put me in a chair to get me out the front door and, you know, have the fire trucks access the street. So if you look at the distance from curb to curb...
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you look at the difference, if you look at the spacing between curb to curb, we're pretty much a working-class neighborhood, but so like if you have a pickup truck on both sides of the street, you are not able to pass by. If you're lucky, you're able to weave in between. Less so on our street, the street behind us is even so bad that we all avoid it in the morning on the way to work because there is not room to pass, let alone have a firetruck or an ambulance access it. So to say that you'll put up some, no parking signs when minutes are important, is kind of not a realistic situation. It's vital that the street have access. And so to take away the parking or not consider the parking is just not a reality. I mean, I understand what the state law says, I'm not necessarily a complete layperson, I'm in the construction trade, and I took the time to read up as much as I could on the subject. And it's like, what, kind of what we're asking for is that, this is such a small, small unit, that when we said we would be more than willing to, we understand Mr. Emendorf has a financial responsibility to himself to try to, you know, get more rent out of his property, which was his stated intention. I mean, but to make it a three-bedroom, what that does is it keeps it as a family unit. It doesn't necessarily make it like, what he wants to do is he wants to rent one half and rent the other half and collect rent, where we have a third separate, or a second separate family living in the unit, instead of having either like a third bedroom, or he has, you know, the existing tenant, or a tenant could come in and rent a three-bedroom instead of a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom unit. It makes it more, how to say it, it just makes it more of a family situation where we don't have another family, a strange, you know, person or family living in there. I'm not sure, twice they've referenced the 17, the Health and Safety Code is what I'm trying to get at. So no one has ever answered, and I asked you personally several times, and they've referenced the Health and Safety Code for maximum occupancy of this unit. And do you, I'm sorry, do you by chance know the occupancy limit?
I have that actually, I looked it up.
I couldn't find it.
But so I can respond to that after public comment. I've got that information.
You can have Scott respond after, after your testimony here.
So, as I talked about, the fact that if you subtract the actual, what's usable floor space, you're looking at about 125 square feet by my calculations. You know, to try to ask $1,000 a month for 125 square feet of bedroom space is kind of exorbitant and doesn't really serve the community interest at all. It certainly doesn't serve our residential neighborhood interests. We'd rather see that money be, go to a family that could, you know, pay a little bit more rent to have a three-bedroom house, keeping more in, basically keeping more in the spirit of the kind of neighborhood that we have. These aren't just laws on a piece of paper, we're actually residents of that neighborhood, we're the neighbors on all sides of this project. And it's very concerning to all of us that this is basically turning into an apartment building. You can call it an ADU, but what it effectively does is it turns us into an apartment complex, duplex, condominium, and this is a single-family residence neighborhood. It always has been. I mean, I personally have been there over 15 years, they've been there 22 years. None of us would have bought had we have known that that was ever even a possibility. That's not what we want to live in. So then there's some other things. The new access to the front of the house that you can't see in the picture here because it's dark, and even in the rendering, it's dark, but basically there's a new access door, there's a new access door that's been put in, and there's a window there, and the parking goes right up to that, except for that there's a new proposed porch there, which reduces the available area by four and a half feet, if the porch is included in his calculations. So then you don't have the 19 feet. Let's see, and so again, you're going to answer my question about the maximum allowable occupancy, and then to, you know, we've talked about the parking. I understand the state's intent in their mandate was to loosen the standards for ADUs, but it's also my understanding that it's their job to rubber stamp this, it's your job to make the final decision, to listen to the odd case, the exceptional, you know, circumstance that might require a little bit more attention than the state gives them. They don't have any latitude, I understand that, but you do. And so what we're asking for is that you take the extra time, which you seem willing to do, and address our concerns as the neighbors. Let's see, and other than that, that's everything I had to say.
Okay, great.
Is there any questions or...
No, we'll continue public comment if we have other questions.
Thank you.
We'll bring you back up. Thank you very much. We had a couple of questions, and Steph, could you answer about the porch encroaching on the parking allotment, and then the health and safety, what is the allowance for occupancy?
Yes, sorry, it doesn't show it on this because this isn't the site plan, but the parking space is fully dimensioned on the site plan to meet that, the front sheet of the plans, that's included in here.
Well, on the site plan, it doesn't show the porch, from my reading of it, so.
It does.
So one of them shows, shows the porch, but it doesn't show the parking space. The other one shows the parking space and not the porch.
I believe it's all shown there, but we have the architect in the audience, which I think can answer the question specifically, since he put the plan together.
That would be good. Hold on a second, let's get the question about the occupancy. What is the allowable occupancy for this?
In my research, I found 70 square feet for one person, and this is for bedrooms. I'm not sure if the studio rule is different, but 70 for one person, 120 for two people, and 170 for three people. So it goes up by 50 square feet with each additional person after one. So this is exceeding that.
Okay, great. I think that answers our questions then that were put forward. Okay, at this point, we'll have the applicant come forward, and we had one question for you on that. Does approaching, does the porch encroach into the parking space?
No, actually, the porch is within the existing garage space, because that was part of the condition, was the 25% rule. So that's why it's 213 square feet and not 275 square feet. So technically, actually, the driveway is longer because of that. Basically, the opening from the garage door remains, creates the porch, but a vehicle can actually extend to that. It would make it awkward to get into the structure, though. But all of the counting of the parking space is actually beyond, and actually, if you look at the site plan, you see the outline of the car space, there's still a few feet in front of the car before you even get to the existing garage door.
Right. So that porch fits into that allowable...
Correct. If you look at the plan that you said that you saw the porch, and actually, you can see it on there in the yellow, the porch is within the yellow space.
Okay.
And then I also have the property manager here as well. He was actually going to be the one sort of, kind of saying hello to you guys and answering any questions. But yeah, if there's other questions like that, but I think that was kind of the main thing that came up there. Let me see if there was...
So...
Oh, and then, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Chris. So Willow, could you flag that on future plans, that, just to confirm that the porch... So Willow, could you flag that on future plans that, just to confirm that the porch doesn't encroach into the legal parking space, just as it goes through further review?
Yeah, the porch was only there because we weren't using that space.
Okay.
And then the other comment related or the discussion about the third bedroom, the problem with making it a third bedroom would make it over 1,000 square feet, triggering two parking spaces.
Okay. Do you have any other testimony you want to make on this, Chris, or just leave it open for further? Okay, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Ron Schmidt and.
Pull the mic. There you go, thank you.
Better for my height.
Yeah.
And I manage the property for Matt Ernst Dorff. And Matt owns a couple of properties in this area and he just trying to make nice rentals for the local families that he has in there. We have a family in there right now. And the family that's in there right now is actually just interested in taking over and paying a little bit of extra rent for that unit. So it's not going to be quite as much of a circus as I think it's been made to believe. So I'd be glad to give my number and I'm available to help the neighbors. Matt's glad that he has concerned neighbors around him and he just wants to enhance his property under the new state guidelines.
Okay, great. Okay, at this point, we'll open up for further public comment. Would you, those wishing to speak, please state your name. And if we could have the next person maybe come forward and sit in an adjacent seat or be ready to come forward when this three minutes are up.
My name's Ray Zelensky. I'm a neighbor across one down. And first of all, I'd like to thank Chris for doing a good job talking to you about some of the concerns. There are a couple of questions I have, but I first would like to point out that this is not a circus, okay? This is our neighborhood. This is something we're all deeply concerned about and the reference to that idea, I think, is insulting. I've got a couple of questions. Because this is going to be a duplex, will there be at least a one-hour firewall between residents? Question number one. Question number two, because they're taking a carport space and it becomes a part of the permanent residence or in this case, a duplex, does it have the required foundation under it that all residents must have? Second question. And I probably know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Are they required to have two separate utility meters and so on in there? And I appreciate when you get time to answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next, please. Next person wishing to speak, please come forward. We'll wait for a public comment and then we'll, if we have questions for you, you've already spoken to this item. So if anybody else would like to come up and speak, please. Okay, seeing none. Please pull the mic down a little bit so everybody can hear you.
Valerie Johnson, I live next door. So he sounds like he's really concerned about the family that's there now and the fact that they're willing to rent the second unit. What happens when those people leave and the next group come in? And when I read about ADUs in a magazine or something, and even in the wording that we got, it talked about people that are connected to each other some way, elderly or disabled or a student or a parent or something, someone that's connected to the people in the main living residents. And I don't see that involved in this situation at all, just anyway, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish, wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll bring it back to the commission. I'll keep public comment open so that we can address questions. So do we, do commissioners have any questions for either the appellate or the applicant?
Question for staff.
For staff? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. And Susan, you had questions for staff?
Well, the questions that Mr. Schmidt proposed, the firewall?
So this project will be required to meet building code. The building inspector has reviewed it. It was not a part of his original conditions, but it will be required to meet building code at the building permit process.
Okay. And that would cover foundation and all those other issues?
That would cover foundation, that would cover the firewall.
And then utility meters, I think that was addressed in here?
It was, but I can re-estate the way that our ordinance is worded. If you are attached, you do not have to have a separate water meter, but if you are detached, then you do. So this one will be able to operate under the same water meter as the primary residence.
So the point behind that is they could choose to have separate utilities or not?
Right, right. Okay.
Okay, Jesse?
Two questions. The first is, could we speak to whether or not the ordinance, our ADU ordinance as passed, speaks to an owner occupied requirement?
It says that it does not, it is not required to be owner occupied.
Neither unit, right?
Neither unit.
That's what I thought it said. The second question I have was assuming, purely presumption or purely speculative, I should say here, if the commission today upheld this appeal, likely it would be appealed to the city council. And at that point, the, would the, would the city councillor, the lawyer, would they be required to uphold your ruling as a matter of law?
Likely that would be the outcome, yes.
Okay.
I believe that answers my question. I wanted to know, it seems to me that we really don't have very much or any discretion at all here and I was wondering.
To some extent, that's true. So there's a reason why we don't have the assistant city attorney here. The law on this is fairly clear. You know, the ADU as proposed is consistent with recent changes to state law. These are the, this was the 2017 housing package, that's what these are related to. We have another round of housing changes related to ADUs that are taking effect January 1. They're actually removing the ability from cities to be able to require owner occupancy of one of the units now. That'll take effect January 1. So they're relaxing the standards. In some instances, in some areas, according to AB 881, you'll be able to have in an R1 zone, an accessory dwelling unit and some sort of micro unit, other units, up to three. So I mean, that's where the state's going. So if you have any question about what the intent there is, is their intent is to remove discretionary authority on the sides of cities to allow the housing to be built because the governor's declared a housing crisis. I mean, that's the direction it's going. They're removing the requirement for our ability to review lot coverage as part of a development standard for ADUs. So it's, it's going the direction of loosening restrictions and removing, you know, the discretionary authority on the part of cities and local jurisdictions and counties.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, I don't know, Willow or Scott, if you have numbers, when we saw the proposal that we did some very preliminary review of a few weeks ago, the folks from the nonprofit housing group, we're talking about how few units market rate and below market rate had been put out there. Do we, do we keep tabs on that where we are? We must be at a tremendous deficit from what our housing element says is a goal for that.
Yeah, I mean, we have the, you know, the previous version of the housing element and we're in the process of updating our current one. Our previous housing element, we did not meet the requirements. I think we were 60-something units short, is that right Nancy? Does that sound right? So 60-something units short, it's all income levels. So very low, low, moderate, we weren't meeting those requirements. We provided some of them, but we're short for sure. And so those numbers will roll into the updated housing element. We have, we're required to provide 391 in total units and I forget the number that are supposed to be affordable out of that. Do you recall? No, okay, so.
So we theoretically are in conflict with our own stated goals for housing, but is that something that's grounds for someone to have litigation against the city if we would restrict this type of thing happening?
I'm not going to speculate on what somebody might do or wouldn't do if it relates to taking the city to court. You know, the, you know, the state is, you know, we can't keep up with the legislation that's being passed. I mean, the reason we're defaulted to the state is because anytime the state deals with ADUs, they say, okay, here's the new policies and if your current ordinance doesn't comply, your entire, any portion of it doesn't comply, your entire ordinance is, is no longer valid. And you have to, you have to default to the state regs and then you have to go back and adopt the new state regs and whatever format you're going to do that for the city. It's more difficult for coastal cities in that we have to go also through the coastal commission, so we're just defaulting to the state regs at this point.
So Scott, we can't require, according to the new state laws, we can't require this to be, be means tested for, you know, low cost or medium cost housing or anything?
No, not only are we short affordable housing, we're short housing.
Right.
And so the intent behind this is to provide that, housing.
And the state is going to supply us with water?
So it does, there, I mean, they keep changing, that's a little bit of a moving target too about how we evaluate that. And if you, if you did have, like some, some cities have limitations in their water distribution systems and so you can evaluate that and say, oh, make a finding that maybe some portion of the town couldn't have like an ADU and a micro unit with the main unit. You can do that and identify where you can, but you have to identify where you can have them so people can come in and say, oh, where can I have these types of things? And you have to have that put together if you're going to do that, so.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? Okay, all I have to say, you know, I'll just say that we're really limited with what we can do on this. We're restricted by, you know, to the public here, we're restricted by state codes and regular, and laws that we have to abide by. So, you know, they've essentially taken all of our discretionary approval rights away from, from planning commissions so that, so that these houses, these housing, you know, multiple units can go in. So that's where we're stuck behind too, regardless of our personal, personal feelings on this.
Want to make comments?
Sure. Okay. I'd like to comment on the appellant's, a couple of the things he said. If you really feel there's a roads issue, if you really feel that you can't get a fire truck down there when you have cars parked on either side, I encourage you to talk to the public works director and talk to him about possibly getting some no parking on one side of the street or the other, just so that's not an issue. I mean, you're right, that's, that's a huge issue and if your public, if your, if your safety is compromised, it sounds like it's compromised already. So I mean, I don't want to discount what you're saying there and I do take your safety seriously. So I really think that if that's, if that's something you're desiring to do, I think you should contact Mr. Livick and, and talk to him about that. So the other thing is, I mean, you talked about, I wouldn't have bought in this neighborhood if I'd known, but every neighborhood in the state's this way. The fabric of our state is changing as it comes to housing. The tiny house provisions of appendix Q of the new residential code, they talk about 170 square foot housing units and loft bedrooms and egress hatches and things are just, you know, we're talking about ship ladders instead of stairs and people are living in smaller and smaller spaces. And this, it's not, it's not that the city's not listening to you. It's not that we don't find your opinions valuable. I find your opinions valuable. I know my, my fellow commissioners do as well as Mr. Graham. Just there's a limit to what we're allowed to say and what we're not allowed to say. And we do take your concerns seriously, it's just some, at some point, we don't have the discretion and the entire state's changing, so.
Yeah, and I'll second the minimum cross-section of the street. There should be only parking on one side of that street, or those streets all in the north, north area. Up on the, you know, there's several streets that are restricted in Morro Bay, in the north Morro Bay area because they're so narrow. And if people park on both sides, you can't get, you literally cannot get a pickup truck through the middle of it. So there should be limited parking just to one side of those, those streets up there. And I think that's something we can recommend in our new plan update if, if nothing else. But, but I think that should be reviewed and, you know, a public comment at the city council meeting would probably be an appropriate way to go too, so to bring it forward to them. Okay, any further comment or discussion?
You know, it strikes, it strikes me that the state very much aware of their problem with affordable housing has felt an absolute need to sort of break this logjam of lack of political will to create some sort of affordable housing. And I, you know, I suspect that the way they were able to do that was to adopt a state law that was essentially one size fits all. And inevitably, when you have a law that one size fits all, there are unintended consequences. And this is a situation where I think the situation, the size doesn't really fit the circumstance. And the solution is to stake, take it up with the state government and try to embed some more reason into this law addressing secondary units.
Well, I think there's, there's another state law, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, that I believe that they're going to be allowing four units on single-family, in single-family zoning without parking requirements.
Right now, it's, it's the AB 881 and we're still kind of going through what all of the requirements and ramifications of our, of that legislation. But it does allow, again, so you'd have a primary unit, accessory dwelling unit and what's called a micro unit. So, and I think that's typically required to be within a portion of the main structure, the main, in the main unit is the requirement. But yeah, I mean, so you're talking about three units at this point. And I think there's another, you know, they're teeing up another round of housing changes, you know, at the legislative level as well. So we're going to, you know, follow the one that we're just going to be implementing on January 1 with another round, I think, possibly dealing with streamlining of the permitting processes, timelines basically, shot clocks.
So I think the state, your state representatives should hear about this condition and I think that's where, that's where our mandates are coming from. So, okay, do we have any motion or further discussion on this?
I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
Chair, I'd like to move that the commission deny the appeal of administrative coastal development permit, CDP 19-035 for the conversion of a 275 square foot attached garage into a 213 square foot ADU.
Second?
Call second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on the motion or the? Okay. The only thing I'd say is that the appeal can go to the city council too. So with our denial, then you could bring this up to the city council. So no further discussion? Could we call the question, please?
Yes. Commissioner Ngrafia?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Chairperson Law?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you guys. Next item is item number B2. This is case number CUP 19-08 slash CDP 19-032 and it's located at 1078 Monterey Avenue in Morro Bay. Do we have any ex parte communication on this item? Okay, staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. This is in an existing mobile home park and it's a request for approval to add a stick-built manager's unit over an existing building. This shows the site. It's existing mobile home. It predates the city's incorporation. It's designated for 10 spaces. The accessory building is existing. The new manager's unit will be one of the 10 spaces. And in this map, space number nine is where the accessory building is. Permitting jurisdiction, just to review, the city of Morro Bay is, has planning authority and in this case, it needs a coastal development permit because it's an addition to an existing building and because it's a permanent dwelling added to a mobile home park is the reason it needs a conditional use permit. The Department of Housing and Community Development will issue building permits. This is elevation of the side of the building and it shows the residential dwelling with the deck above a common area space and a carport area and the carport area will be for two cars. This shows the upper floor, bedroom, bathroom, entry, kitchen, living room, eating nook and deck, very efficient 526 square feet of living space and 150 square foot deck. and deck, very efficient 526 square feet of living space and 150 square foot deck. This is the ground level, and this shows conceptually the area of the existing building. This will be reconfigured to storage and laundry area for the residents in the mobile home park. And the existing accessory building is non-conforming in that it was built three feet or less from the property line, and the dwelling unit above would be required to meet all of the standards. The applicant has agreed to reconfigure the existing building and move that southern wall so that it's conforming as well. So the entire building will meet the side yard setback. This is the four elevations, the south, east, west, and north. And this is a colored rendering of the front. This shows design and exterior finishes. It's very similar to the new park model units that are taking the place of trailers in older mobile homes. It has very little visibility from the street since it's the second unit in, and the first unit next to the street is one of the new park models. This shows a street view from more or less the intersection of Beach and Monterey, and it shows where the red car is, is the location where this building will be. This is a view south down Monterey. Both north on Monterey and west on Beach are primarily commercial uses, so the comparable neighborhood compatibility would be this direction. And then it's gone. Ah, it's back. All you have to do is push a button, and it comes back. This is the city development standards for the R4 zone and the proposed dwelling. Some of them are not applicable because this is the interior dwelling, so it's not measured from the rear setback or the front setback. It is going to be modified to meet the side yard setback for the existing building, and it meets the height requirement. And I have one modification in the resolution. I had typed a resolution for the fire department incorrectly and put in their requirement for fire sprinklers, and that's not correct. The fire department true condition has to do with address identification. So that'll be modified in the resolution that is routed for signature, and that should be mentioned in your motion that we're making this modification in the resolution. And that concludes the presentation, and staff's recommendation is for approval of the conditional use permit, the coastal development permit pursuant to findings and conditions as modified by the change in the fire department, condition number three, included in Planning Commission Resolution 30-19.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Jesse?
I don't understand the requirement, or the, how did that, or the decision to remove the fire sprinklers, how did that come about?
It's not a decision to remove it, it's just, it's a technical difficulty in that the conditions came through as a PDF, and the fire department never had sprinklers required. They're not required.
For a dwelling?
Hmm?
For a dwelling unit?
In their conditions, they did not have fire sprinklers. And I just typed in over an older resolution and didn't remember to change the third condition.
I want to make sure I understand this, so I'm sorry if I ask this question again, but, so we're creating a dwelling unit where a dwelling unit did not exist, and we're not requiring that dwelling unit to be sprinkled?
In an R4.
So the requirement will be up to HCD, we're not approving the building permit for the project. And our current ordinance doesn't require, well, current ordinance doesn't require sprinkling for under 1,000 square feet. But this is going to be up to HCD anyway.
That was my next question, if I may. You know what, it's a comment, I'll wait.
Okay, so I've got, along the similar lines, I'm going to jump in here, guys. So there's laundry facilities below, there's, so it's dwelling unit above, and we're not requiring sprinklers in either the laundry upgrade or the dwelling unit. And then what about ADA accessibility?
That'll be up to HCD.
For both of that? Okay.
Correct. We have limited authority in mobile home parks.
Okay.
So we can place things on the projects, and we have a limited ability to enforce them.
If, I don't want to turn this into a discussion, but I don't know if we can, but, I mean, I get that that may have been the status quo, but municipalities have the authority to, I mean, especially if we have planning jurisdiction, we can, a municipality may require that all stick-built and site utilities be the jurisdiction of their city. And I realize that may not have been how it's done here for a long time, and maybe that's something we need to talk to the City Council about amending, because I really don't have a lot of faith in HCD, I'm just going to be frank, so.
I understand your faith or lack thereof in HCD, especially when it comes to mobile home parks. But you're right, our ordinance doesn't currently provide us that authority. You can do that, as you suggest, Commissioner Barone, but the city has not gone down that road.
Okay, may we possibly agendize that for a future meeting?
I'll let you leave that discussion toward the end.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Okay, further questions for staff? Okay. At this point, we'll open public comment. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak to this item?
Hi, my name's Jeff Borges, and I'm one of the partners on this project. And we have the other project that we're doing on 1998 Main Street, and we pretty much are trying to renovate these parks in town. And they are, we're designing them to be affordable. So putting fire sprinklers in is very expensive, and that's why we, like, the ADUs do not require fire sprinklers, and this building is in that same, you know, it's a tiny house, basically. So we're trying to keep our costs down. It's, HCD, you guys pretty much told us what we have to put in there. That was just because of it not being over 1,000 square feet is, it's a, isn't it the code? And so that's why there's no sprinklers in there.
I've seen there's no other public here, except I'm assuming that's your partner there?
On the other building, and he better not protest.
Okay. So we'll open this up for staff, for commission questions to you, the applicant. And my question to you is, have you considered this maybe going to the expense of putting sprinklers in this building, basically because you have a laundry facility down below, pretty much a commercial laundry facility down below, which has a high likelihood at some point in its life expectancy to catch fire? So have you considered that thought in your planning process and your insurance liability, you know, insurance bills?
We're only going to be putting into a washer and a dryer. And that's, most of the units, the tiny homes that we're putting in, they, we're providing a washer and a dryer hookup for the stackables. And so really, we don't want to have a washer and dryer, because it's a pain to go get the quarters and all that. But the existing park right now has a place for it, but they never put the washers and dryers in, and I don't know why, but we feel that as we transition the park, it's not right to have, we just, we're doing that more for the tenants as we transition the park to upgrade the units, that they'll have a place to do laundry. But our intentions aren't to have, that's not our intentions, and I could show you the interiors of the, all the existing units, we've put four in so far, all of them have a capacity for washer and dryers. So that is our intent on this particular project, is not to have a laundry room. But we felt that until we transitioned, because it takes, it takes a couple of years to transition these parks, we just want to give that to the tenants, because we would want that if we were in, because we have the old units, if you've been by there, any of them, we have the old units, and they don't have that capacity to have washers and dryers. And what we've done is we've limited, we don't just open it up to anybody. We limit it to the units that don't have washers and dryer hookups. Those are the tenants that are given an electronic pass to use the facility. But our goal is eventually not to do it, because it's more than a fire safety hazard, it's a pain in the butt to go over there all the time and collect those quarters. And it's kind of a break even. We're not in the laundry business. Our business is to provide affordable housing for the community of Morro Bay. And so you're going to see us in here, and we're hoping that once we complete a project to have all of you walk through it and see the vision that we have for Morro Bay and the community here. And so we're not here just to, everything we're doing is done, built right, above and beyond what are the surrounding mobile home parks and RV parks are doing.
Yeah, I have to, in driving by your other projects, I have to commend you on what you've done, you know, to make them compatible with the community. So I have to commend you, and I appreciate that. I have one other question for you on this, is are you going to be supplying an EV charging circuit into that parking area?
We hope to, absolutely.
Okay.
That's the future, too.
Yeah, so that's.
Is to have electric vehicles.
But in the time of construction?
We haven't, we have not put that on this particular project yet.
Okay, but during the construction phase, you know, allow for a 240, 40 amp circuit into that parking area, and then you can plug in an EV charger at any time in the future.
That's a great idea. We can, we should put that in right now, I just, it just went over our head, because we wanted to buy for the manager electric vehicle just to go around town, because it's just, this is the future.
Yeah.
And.
And for affordability also.
Yes. And so, but I mean that sincerely, when we finish our project at Morro Bay, we have, we've, on Main Street, we've ordered our final five units. When we get it done, we would like to invite all of you to, we'll do an open house and go through and see, you know, see what we've done and what we want to continue to do. Because, and I understand the people that were here. You know, it's, but the law is here to help, and it's to help across the board, all the communities, and especially along the coastline here where things are so outrageous. I have, I've got three daughters that were raised here, and they're all renting, basically. And one's, one's living at home still. Well, there's a reason, because you guys know, we have a housing crisis, and we need to do our part to make it a place for the, our graduates, Cal Poly graduates. My two daughters graduated from Cal Poly. My best friend here, his daughter is there. None of them can afford to live here. So if we can put these tiny homes in, but do them right, that, it's going to be a good thing for all of us. And it's going to, you know, it's something that we believe in and support, and so.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant? Michael?
Questions for the applicant or comments to the applicant?
No, I just want to say, in a, for what Commissioner Lor was saying, I go past the North Main project all the time, and I think you've done a great job there, and it looks like you've got a similar design sense coming into this one, so.
Yeah, and we're, I'm glad you're seeing it, because, and we have support of the community, too. That's the great thing. I have people go by, honk the horns. Because if you remember it before, that was the drug, there was four drug dealers in there when we took it over. That was the place that made, the police officers here, they were there on a regular basis, it was two or three times a week. And so what we're trying to do is bring, you know, bring affordability and bring, and we, the nice thing is, too, is we still have original tenants there. So it's not like we've removed these people. No, we've given them, we've given them hope, and we've given them a better place to live. And that's what we're all about.
I have a couple of comments. So I mean, when I first saw automatic fire sprinklers on the, in the resolution, I figured that was just kind of how it was going to be. If you were to put a park model, HCD, Title 25 approved unit in, that would be required to be sprinkled, assuming you got a relatively new one, because that's been a requirement since, like, 2011. So I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that you're doing anything, I want to apologize if I came off like I was being accusatory or anything, I appreciate what you're doing. I just, I find that that's, the sprinklers save lives. The State Fire Marshal has a statistic that there hasn't been a fatality in a sprinkled residence since 2012 where the water was on. So they save lives. And I think, I would say the numbers back it up. The cost during construction is negligible. I would say less than 2% addition to your construction cost. So I mean, I know you're not required to do it on this project, and we have kind of a bigger discussion, you know, globally, because I kind of, I kind of think what you're doing, well, not kind of think, I really think what you're doing is very, is very good, taking these mobile home parks and making them into a really nice place to live. And, you know, if we're going to continue doing that throughout the city, that's great. I just want to make sure we're using the right, the right logic and the right safety measures to make sure that they're safe, because we're cramming people together, and that's great. You know, I mean, if that's what, the way they choose to live, and that's what they can afford. But the closer we put people together, I think, the more we have to be cognizant of the safety involved. So you're not required by Mr. Graham to, or I'm sorry, by the city of Morro Bay to put the fire sprinklers in, but I think you might want to consider it. So that's all I'll say on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Further? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll close public comment at this point, bringing back to the commission. Comments, discussion? Anything further, Jesse?
No, I mean, just generally, I feel it's a loophole. I mean, a dwelling unit would be required to have sprinklers on a lot that wasn't within an HCD jurisdiction, and a park model, mobile home, I'm sorry, a park model manufactured home would also be similarly required to have sprinklers. I feel this is a loophole, and I don't like it.
Is it because of the size that it's not required?
Our ordinance just doesn't reach into the mobile home parks at this point, but yeah, we have size limitations as well. Those size limitations are going away, because we, with our local amendments to the 2019 Building Code, that we're, where we're going to starting January 1. But it doesn't affect this because they're in a mobile home park.
Okay. Scott, can we condition this for an EV charging circuit into the parking area? We're talking about a plug.
Well, so the question would then be whether they have the?
Because present building code requires it on any new structure.
That's not within HCD jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's the problem, and there's, you'd be putting conditions in it. So what happens, so a little explanation about what happens here. I mean, we'll at some point get to go out and look at, to see that the exterior of the building looks okay, but we don't really have any jurisdiction. Like, HCD can say, that's great, city of Morro Bay, that you put that condition on the project, but we're not going to have them do that. And we have, it's unenforceable. I'm reluctant to put conditions that we can't enforce on projects.
Yeah, I don't want to condition something beyond our scope, beyond our responsibility, but I would highly recommend it.
Normally, it would be required, I mean, it would be, you'd have to have the infrastructure in place.
We'll open public comment again.
Well, technically, the city, I mean, HCD is required to use Title 24 when they're not using Title 25, and Title 24 requires sprinklers and dwellings, so, anyway.
I'm, I will put that in. You don't have to make it a condition, and you, do you have an electric car?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of them.
You can be the first one to come and use it. And just, and put, but seriously. And just, and put, but seriously, put it in there, put it on there because I need to put it in the plans, but that it's not a condition. And then that way, the, the architect can put it on the plans.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay.
If I can kind of further my comment, I think, I think these are great. I think, I mean, ultimately, I think 10 years from now, maybe 15 years from now, we're going to see all of our mobile home parks kind of go to this park model concept. And I think that's great. I think we're going to see better units, we're going to see a more, better standard of living, quality of life. All of these things are positive. I just, when we get to that point, I'm going to make an agenda request.
How far is the nearest fire hydrant from this? I didn't even go look. I, I mean, I didn't, I looked, but I didn't think about fire hydrants at that point.
That's good, that's going to be a fire-
It's got to be fairly close because the school is there, the former school building and, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's interesting because I think disasters, when they happen, really hit mobile home parks hard. You know, because they're smaller, because-
Just ask Jimmy Buffett.
Yeah. At the same time, because people do live in close proximity and keep an eye on each other, I think they're almost more aware if something's going wrong than you are in your average neighborhood where you have distance between your homes and you're not going to smell the smoke or be aware of, you know, things going on. So I don't know, it's a, it's a nice project and what he's been doing, I think, is something that's needed. So yeah, down the road, hopefully we see more of those kinds of safety requirements. But these look like really well-built units that are already safer than, you know, most of the mobile home areas that you see torn away by tornadoes or something, you know? I mean, really. Much more solid.
Yeah, I completely support what's being done. I do think though, you know, Commissioner Barone has a really important point because I don't know, it just in the back of my mind, how many mobile home parks do we have within the denser parts of the city? You know, the ones like out on 41, that are sort of by themselves, that, that's not as much of an issue as ones like this. This is in the center of an R4. This is one of our densest parts of the city. And yet this is the only enclave that's not going to be sprinkled out of any of those buildings through there. I can't imagine all the commercial isn't sprinkled and the new residential is going in. So it, it concerns me from a, and this is more something for the, you know, the, the fire folk to think about is, as we look at this kind of model evolving, are we actually creating something that's a problem for them? Because they can't get a fire truck in here. We, we were talking about we can't go on the street, we can't get a fire truck in here. And so I, I think when, with the kind of wind we have and, and, you know, I, I love the fact that density is coming and dense means every square foot matters. And so you get better design than these places where it just looks like it came in from Kansas and plopped down, but nothing matters. I'm, I'm optimistic, but I, I think there's a, there's an urban aspect to putting high-density, non-sprinkled things in the center of the city. We've got one right up the street here from, from the, I don't know if that's in the, the-
We've got one right next door.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We've got, we've got one here. And so there's a number of these enclaves that I, I'd be very concerned that as we look down the line, something like, should we be putting a hydrant in close? You know, should, you know, even off the domestic water system, putting the sprinklers in, I would think would be a viable thing for their insurance. But I'm concerned about our ability to hold down something that starts in the center of a dense area.
Well, I think we've got, you know, this is philosophical at this point, but we had a, we have an anomaly in this community where we had these mobile homes, mobile home parks set up prior to the city's incorporation. And they're set up where in our present, in an appropriately zoned city, they would not be allowed, you know, on Beach Street, on here, you know, on Main Street, you know, those areas, you know, arguably would not be allowed to have, should not be allowed to have mobile home parks. And so I don't think that this is, you know, the city, the state agency is not set up to handle these, this condition. And I think we're fallen between, we're fallen between the cracks on that. So, motion or further comment?
This is the comment, I mean, can anyone present any, any logic, explanation as to not have the sprinkler? I mean, it strikes me, I mean, there's obviously some minimal cost savings, but it, but in terms of safety and preparedness and thinking about consequences, it seems that it's illogical not to have it.
We put in a sprinkler system on a residential remodel of, it was 750 square feet and it cost us $4,000.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not, we're not talking mega millions here and I, you know, I think you would, you might even get that back in your insurance premiums.
There's some, there's some that trigger a, a separate meter, right?
Pardon?
There's some that trigger a separate meter.
Sometimes you have to increase the meter size.
Yeah, and that tends to be-
Depends on what the flows are. For small units, you might be able to get away with this, with this, with a smaller line because it don't need as much fire flow.
Depends on the line pressure. We had to, you know, we had to bump up from a 5/8 to 3/4 meter, but you know, it was 250 bucks to do that.
And even if, like say it was an impossibility, you can also put in a 140 gallon tank because your sprinklers are only supposed to go off for seven minutes at 30 gallons a minute. So I mean, we're not talking, you know, oodles and oodles of water storage, so there, there's a lot of wiggle room there.
Okay, well, I think we've gone past the, this item, so let's, let's get a motion on this one.
Well, in fairness to the applicant, I, I'll move that the commission approved the application for a conditional use permit, CUP 19-08, and coastal development permit, CDP 19-03, for a proposed 526 square foot new dwelling to be constructed as a second floor over an exist, an expanded existing accessory building.
I'll second.
With, with-
With, right.
Fire department.
Modify fire condition number three.
Do I have to? With modification for fire-
I'll still second.
Sorry, Jesse. I know that hurt. And do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion?
Did we get it all?
Okay, and then, so let's call the question then, please.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Lur.
Yes. And once again, we do appreciate, you know, what you've done on the Main Street project. You know, I, you know, I've really cleaned up, cleaned up that area and, you know, I trust, trust what you've been doing. So, thank you and go forth and make it better. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, moving on to item C, this is a new business and I think somebody wants to talk about fire sprinklers and new business.
Scott, may we have a, please have a future agenda item to discuss the, actually, what I would like to discuss is the jurisdiction. So as I understand it, and I could be wrong, maybe we'll have to talk to the city attorney, municipalities have, have the ability to keep jurisdiction on stick-built, Title 24-regulated structures and site-built utilities within mobile home parks.
I, I believe that is the case. I believe you're correct. I had, you know, pretty lengthy discussion about this when I was in Pismo, about whether we could require, you know, them to go through building permits with the city at the time and then that was the thing that came out of it as well, if we had an ordinance in place that did this. But I think there's some concurrence thing that you, you have to actually submit an application through HCD to take the authority for stick-built buildings or something. So there was a process for it. I'd have to go back and, you know, kind of refresh my memory on what that was involved, but yeah.
In my understanding, in my, in my experience, I should say, of dealing with HCD, they're, they're happy to concede. So they're, they're, they're not usually wanting to keep jurisdiction of those structures because they admittedly don't have the expertise. And in my, in my experience, then that could be speaking out of turn and they're going to probably be mad at me, but.
So do we have consensus that we would like to look at this issue? Because I think we've, we've got the potential for a lot of, for all of these parks to come back through to us, you know?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm going to do some research into this and then I'm going to do a little bit of a report back to you before we have it agendized because we've, council recently adopted changes to the advisory board handbooks and guidelines and one of those has to do with future agenda items. We may need to get authorization from council for that. And so if I have to come back, I'll get you all to, you know, make another motion and then we'll move it forward and I'll make the request of council for you, so they can say that it's okay. They approve our work programs, right? And unfortunately, as you'll recall, this last go-around for the goals, they didn't engage with the commission. Normally they do and there's a meeting, at least at a minimum, the chair goes and we didn't do that this time. We will be doing it for the next goal-setting session, which we're going to be starting goals discussion, I think in January.
Don't, don't forget commercial design guidelines.
No, and that's, that's kind of what I, what I'm saying is, you know, those are, we're going to be having that process, my understanding, for this next round of goal-setting, you know, with the council and, and the planning commission will be engaged. And we'll have a work program that we run through you to make recommendations to council on what you want to work on. And certainly would support that, so. But I also need to look at what the guidelines were, if they changed the planning commission's regs as it relates to future agendas. They did for some of the other boards and I, I didn't, I don't recall if they did it for planning commission or not.
And I think Jesse's, you know, I, you know, I'll back you up on this, Jesse, too, you know, I just, you know, follow alongside you. You know, this is a health and safety item that, you know, that is, it's, it, it seems own, it might seem onerous to some people, but when you get down into the actual nuts and bolts of it, it really isn't that expensive if there, you know, the caveat is if, if you don't have to upgrade the main line in the street, which you most normally don't have to.
Right. And I may be off-base here also, so in the event this didn't proceed any further than this discussion, I believe the fire department, being the fire district with juris, with fire jurisdiction, could resolve to require sprinklers on stick-built structures.
So that's actually one of the things I was going to go talk to them about. One of my notes and, you know, that I was taking while I was typing away madly over here was to actually, you know, touch base with them because I'd be interested to get their take. We, I didn't, you know, talk specifically about, on this project with them about it, but I mean, I had, I had in general conversation with the fire marshal in Napiera about this and, you know, we changed our local amendments related to fire sprinklers for homes because we have, you know, such dense, you know, housing in the north end of town and wanted to get rid of the requirement or the exception for fire sprinklers and require them for the, for the new homes because those things are, you can reach out and shake hands between them in some instances, you know, that's, that's a problem when you have fire. So you tend to end up damaging the structures around them if not destroying them as well. So certainly a concern on the, on the part of fire, this should be no different, so.
Well, we had that laundry, you know, the dryer vent fire that happened up in North Morro Bay with, you know, with Richard, I mean, yeah, with Richard.
And you know, and as a member of a deliberative body that recognizes-
As a member of a deliberative body that recognizes a problem and a safety issue and our responsibility to look after the interests of the citizens, you know, I, I don't like essentially just sort of throwing up my hands and saying, well, we can't do anything about it at this point. That's, that's really not a good answer. I'm not saying we have any, any other choice at the moment, but we really shouldn't be satisfied with that.
So, so Scott, I'd like to also bring up, we talked about this before, but once again tonight, we had an issue where the, the neighborhood was totally upset with somebody doing non-permitted work to, to a structure when by getting the permit, they could have solved, you know, they could have not raised the hackles of the whole neighborhood. So where are we with, with, we talked about it, about upping, you know, upping the consequences of somebody performing non, non-permitted work. Right now, it's just, well, now you have to come in and get a permit. I don't think that's-
So we, we have the ability, you know, if we have repeat offenders, I, I actually, I know that this one started off and I don't know what they were doing at the time when they were doing the work. We have the ability to charge double the permit fees if we want, I mean, that's in the building code for us, we can use that. So we have the ability to implement fines. What we, so part of that comes up to, you know, typically the building inspector when he goes out there and is talking with them, because he has the interaction with them to see what the situation was. Sometimes, you know, they were just legitimately blowing and going and didn't really care to get permits and, you know, give you some lame excuse and, and, and times like that, we have charged them the additional fees. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. It just kind of depends on, you know, what the circumstance is out there. If somebody's, you know, like, hey, we were, you know, replacing or repairing something and then it was an onion and we got to lend a little bit more than we should have, I mean, sometimes that happens.
Yeah.
And they might be a little bit on the edge about where they could have been okay and we get a call because we always get a call in this community, you know, and we'll go out there and sometimes we're a little more lenient, which is like, hey, you need to stop and come in and get your permit right now. We can get you a permit over the counter, so just come and do it, you know? And then usually that results in somebody coming in and getting a permit immediately and it's five minutes of our time. But if it's, but if it's like a repeat offender that we've told several times and had the same issue with, then they get the extra fine. So that's kind of how it works, I guess I was just explaining that.
But I would like to have the ability to have it, have it more punitive on the front side that could then be waived with, you know, with good behavior, let's say. Because quite frankly, we have a lot of people here that come, these are second homes, they bring somebody over from the, from, you know, from somewhere else and that person will tell them, oh, you don't need to have a permit for this. Well, that's not true, you know, the, and these are life, safety and health issues that, that should be picked up.
We, we, we got the, the one the other day, they were building an eight-foot concrete block wall next to the house. Doesn't need a permit. Well, I'm from Fresno, it doesn't need a permit in Fresno. I was like, I could call the building department in Fresno right now and I guarantee you, they require a permit for your eight-foot wall.
Yeah. Just yesterday mornings, there was a, you know, I, I come out and turn the corner from my house and there's a steep, there's a corner and then a steep rise. There was a big dump of, of concrete. The ready-mixed truck had made the corner too fast and the whole, you know, like a yard of concrete sloshed out on, onto the street. You know, Public Works, there was no permit for, for anybody pouring 10 yards of concrete up there. So they had no, they drove around trying to find who was pouring concrete and couldn't find somebody. So this is an issue where the city had to take, had to go and clean it up, where it could have been easily resolved, you know, to check with who was pouring concrete, who had a permit, who just had a rebar inspection or something. So.
And, you know, I, I'd like to suggest for, for particularly egregious situations where it's not just a fine, I, I think people would really take notice if they were prevented from, from being able to receive a permit for a significant piece of time, whether it's six months or a year or two years. Meaning if you have sort of dirty hands, you're not going to avail yourself of permit law.
So when you get into things like that, then you have, a lot of times you're dealing with contractors, right? And then you're punishing the owners because they hired somebody that was bad, trying to cut corners.
Well-
Putting that money that would otherwise go through that process in their pocket. I mean, like, so you've got to be careful with stuff like that, you know? I mean, there's, there, the circumstances, you know, are different each and every time these types of things happen. But oftentimes the owners don't know, you know, what's going on and the folks say, oh, either they're told by the contractor and they don't know that it doesn't need a permit or they, oh yeah, we have the permits. I get that all the time as well. And they don't have the permits and then we talk to the owner and we find that out. So I mean, this is, I mean, this is an ongoing conversation that we have frequently. I mean, it's-
I think having a, you know, a sizable penalty that's available, that, that would raise the attention that, that we're serious about this. Right now, everybody, you know, people I talk to say, potential clients, and I deal with this quite a bit, potential clients will say, oh, it's too expensive to get a permit, so we're not going to get a permit. Well, they'll get a permit if they're caught, but they won't get a permit beforehand. So, you know, having the ability to make it more painful for them to not get a permit than, you know, I think we need to work, to have that ability. And then we can always, you know, if, if they came in good faith and told a good story, then, then those fines could be reduced, you know?
If I can, if I can offer, I mean, this is something I've been doing since a long time. What I've seen, and I'm sure Scott's seen similar things, the state license board, the contractor state license board-
Right. Right.
-really is where this problem lies. And unfortunately, they just don't have the ability. I don't know if it's the, the resources or if it's-
They don't care.
-the will. But they, they really don't enforce, because, I mean, if you have a, if you have a contractor performing badly in Morro Bay, then he's performing badly in Oro Grande, and then in Paso Robles. We don't have the ability to, to kind of crack down on that. But they do, and they have some hefty fines they can assess, and they just don't.
We can file complaints on licenses. You know, it, more likely and inclined to file a complaint on someone's license if they're a repeat offender, meaning I can go on the state contractors licensing board and see that they've had the same thing go on. If I see that, and it's with the contractor that was acting badly here, then I will file a complaint on their license, you know. So, as the building official-
But some of them aren't even licensed. Some of the people doing the work are not even licensed.
Well, that's even, that's an even bigger fine. If you're, if you're, if you're within a contract over $500 per day and-
But, but the state contractors board will not pursue those cases.
Well-
That's why, I think, that's why we need to have a municipal option.
Building officials have an extraordinary ability to call and sometimes force their hand.
And then I would say, with respect to the innocence of the, of the owner versus the culpability of the contractor, having dealt with construction and having multiple bids, you know, the, the owners are on notice. If he, if he gets three bids and one's is sizably below the other bids, there's a certain notice that perhaps not everything is being done properly. So I, I would not, I would not, I would not unduly hold the owners innocent of these permit violations. And so I wouldn't be as reluctant.
Everybody involved has their own culpability. And if, if, if you're dealing with plumbing or electrical or, you know, or structural, you know you need to get a permit.
Right. And, but, I mean, just kind of big picture holistically, I would rather have a Scott Graham there with a common sense hat on and making those decisions case by case, rather than making a very punitive fine-related, you know.
And so, and so would I.
At this point, we're getting way off the rails in the discussion. So if we could just back off of that, and I will, so I understand that we want to talk about this. Good debate. And, and again, assuming that, you know, we're able to do that without having to go to council with authorization to talk about it, I'll bring it back.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. You know, keep the guardrails up here. Okay. So then unfinished business?
It's all unfinished.
Yeah. Okay. Planning commissioners' comments? And we talked about future agenda items, so.
One comment.
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, the WORFCAC was dissolved, so I'm no longer a WORFCAC member. And the Public Works Advisory Board is looking for people. So if you know anybody that's, they're going to be assuming the responsibilities the WORFCAC had. And if you know anybody interested in that, get ahold of Mr. Leibig, I assume.
Mr. Leibig, although they're posted, so the, I believe the openings for all advisory boards are posted on the city's website. And so those applications actually go into the city clerk's office. So Dana Swanson or Heather will take those in. And, and again, as Commissioner Barone said, the WORFCAC, those duties will be pushed over onto the PWA moving forward, I think, as opposed to sort of keeping the WORFCAC sitting out there kind of in the wind a little bit and meeting, you know, quarterly or something. They're moving it over to the PWA. It was a discussion and a decision by council at the last council meeting.
Okay. Then Scott, did you have any other further comments?
I do. So, you know, I think a few of you have gone, and some of you have not, and would might like the opportunity. We have the, coming up in March, the Planning Commissioners Academy, put on by the League of California Cities. It's in Sacramento, at the, you know, kind of conference center they have there, accommodations that are at the Hyatt there. So if there's interest, you don't need to let me know today. I was just kind of putting the buzz in your ear. It'll be the fourth through the sixth, so that's a Wednesday through Friday, you know, and be happy to pay for the conference and hotel accommodations and that type of thing. And for those of you that are interested, again, you don't have to tell me today. If you know today you want to do it, let, fine, tell me. But otherwise, you know, look at your calendar, see if you're interested, and let me know, and I will make that happen.
It was really informative and, you know.
It was probably one of the longest without power things.
Yes, right.
I still remember sitting there with my glow stick in the hotel room at 2:00 in the morning.
Yep.
Could I just say a quick thing? I did go to the Housing Element Update Workshop, the first one. It was really good, well-attended. People faces I hadn't seen before, attending different meetings. And just for the public who may still be watching, the landing page of the city's website has a questionnaire that you could fill out online on what people want to see, concerns in the community.
We also put those in folks' utility bills as well.
In the utility bill as well.
You don't have to go online to do it. You can, we have people walk them in.
You could fill out a piece of paper and send it in. Yeah, yeah.
Those were the first responses that we actually got, where folks walking them in. So that's, yeah.
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 Scott, can you say anything about the, the battery storage by the power plant?
So, so, I mean, you know, obviously, it's not on the agenda, so I can't really speak to it, other than it is a battery storage project that's been submitted to the city. I can't really give you much more information than what's in your, you know, the, the log there that you have that we reviewed under consent. You know, we're just working through it with, with Vistra right now. I mean, you know, it's, it's a, it's a back-and-forth deal. They want to carve out about four and a half, five acres behind the existing power plant building. That's what it looks like. It's a pretty expensive project. And we're in the, you know, beginning phases of review. We don't really have full sets of plans on it yet. They kind of gave us, you know, some preliminary plans in their full application with a lot of the environmental studies that go with it. We've asked for more, and we're in the, we're in the process right now of getting bids on the environmental documents and what that might be. We're not presuming that it's going to be MND. It could be an EIR. It just kind of depends. We're looking at all kinds of things related to truck trips because it's a big project. There's a lot of, you know, heavy truck trips that go along with it. So we're looking at traffic and how they're accessing it. And, you know, preference would not be, you know, the Embarcadero because it's going to be a six-month-plus-long project development. So we're looking at the, you know, kind of the preliminary phases of it at this point. And-
Will that, will that trigger more of a, you know, a master's planning?
So, you know, that issue's been raised. You know, you probably want to have a master plan with the folks that are actually going to develop most of the site. I mean, again, I said four and a half, five acres. There's probably 80 developable acres out there or something along those lines, maybe 70. That developer's going to have a good idea about what they need to make a viable project. And so it would be good to have, when the developer comes forward, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, you know, we'd have them, you know, be doing the, the master plan for the facility. Because as part of a master plan, you're also looking at infrastructure and, and capacity related to sewer, the lines that are there and water and those types of things. And if we don't know what can go in there, that's a little bit of a difficult, difficult get. We're kind of shooting in the dark, and we'd be coming up with a project, you know, that we say, oh, this would be great if we had it here. And then the developer comes up and like wants something that's 180 degrees from that because that is a pencil. You know, some of it's going to be, you know, bad. It'll be a mixed-use project that goes in there, but we don't necessarily know all of the uses, which is why, as many of you know, we, all of you, at this point, you know, we've provided flexibility in land use over that site to provide for mixed use. So we don't, so they're not constrained, really, right? It's going to be, you know, visitor-serving commercial over a portion of it because of where it's located. And we know it needs to have that, and that was through conversations with Coastal. But the rest of it's visitor-serving, the mixed-use overlay. So it could have housing, it could be light industrial, it could be any number of things. And we want that story sort of told by the, by the developer that would come forward. So while we could do a master planning process upfront, I don't know how useful it would be. And it might just unnecessarily create angst. We adopt something that has all these uses. It's going to be this. And then someone comes along and says, well, our feasibility study, here you go. It's two inches thick, says we can't really do that. We need to do X. And then we're like, okay, now you're not complying with what the city wants. We don't want to set up a, you know, a negative situation with somebody. We want to be a partner, I think. And that's sort of been our take. I know we've been having sort of internal conversations about this, and maybe it turns later and it ends up something like that. I don't know. But again, this is sort of step one in many, in a long process.
And I'm sure the environmental, the impact report will deal with sea level rise and tsunami and-
Has to deal with all of those, yeah. I mean, it's, that whole thing's in a flood plain. So, you know, it's probably going to be raised, and we're going to be looking at, there's a PD permit overlay on top of it and all those types of things. So all that's going to come into play. So.
And are they associated with Monterey Bay, the community choice aggregation thing?
They, you know, they could be, they could, you know, be part of that. Their idea is, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it's, we need battery storage throughout the United States at this point and what that looks like. You know, this is, you know, we're sort of in the early stages of having that. We have, there's more of these facilities back east than there are out here, out west. You know, and so, you know, they've, they have one under construction at Moss Landing, Vistra does. And they have, I think they're in permitting for the other one at Oakland. Moss Landing will be the largest battery facility on the West Coast. And then Morro Bay, you know, based on what they're submitting right now, would be the second largest. It's certainly intriguing. I think really interesting, really kind of cool out of the powers, out of a power plant site that was pretty eerie to have a, a more clean technology. And I'll use my air quotes there because there's questions related to batteries and what happens with those, and how clean is that technology, really? And so we're asking those questions, you know, like, what's the life of them? And what happens when they're at best their useful life? I mean, we need to know, we want to know all that stuff. So that's kind of questions that we're asking upfront to get all the information. So you have a good, solid package when it comes before you to make a decision.
And then where, where are they with tying in with, with offshore wind?
It certainly would be available like any project would. You know, they will, you know, that battery, you know, a battery solution in this location would simply pull power off the grid when we're not using it, you know. During the day, you know, the state of California produces more power than we can use. And we sell it at a cheap rate to other states. And this is sort of a, and then in the evening, when everybody goes home and our power needs peak, we buy it at four times the cost or whatever it is. So, you know, the battery things, you know, battery storage, you know, projects can, can help resolve some of that and provide cheaper power overall. And the Monterey Bay, you know, power situation is that we're buying clean energy supposedly. So it could be part of that, assuming that, you know, it qualifies. And I would imagine it does. I mean, again, on its face, it sounds great. The devil's in the details. So.
Okay. Anything else, guys? At this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting here at 209 Sur Street on January 7th, 2020, at 6:00 PM.